All right, prior to the start of our city council meeting today, we're going to have MD Isley and Sukhu Radhya and I think Richard Early are going to be here all to make presentations about Bravo. And so, MD, I'm turning it over to you. And you want to... you probably should get to play.
That would be great.
Yep.
Mayor, council members, guests, thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly today to you all about Bravo Greater Des Moines. And specifically, we'd like to thank each of you for your continued support of arts, culture, and heritage, the organizations that provide those services in the greater Des Moines area. And we do that through the funding that, of course, is provided to Bravo Greater Des Moines. We thank the Des Moines City Council specifically also for your continued support of the business of art. As you know, a healthy business economy needs a thriving arts community. Working with you all and 12 other partner local governments, we're able to provide funding of approximately $2.3 million a year to our region's arts, culture, and heritage organizations. And we, of course, do that on an annual basis. We're also able to help generate awareness and understanding of the importance of a vibrant and healthy arts and cultural sector to this regional economy. Together, we're strengthening our community and working towards making this a truly world-class region. Annually, our arts organizations are serving more than 1.5 million attendees, and they're infusing approximately $55 million into the region. And our arts organizations are generating an economic impact of $100 million, approximately. The arts are employing a creative workforce, spending money locally, and generating government revenue. We are a cornerstone of tourism and economic development. Together with the city of Des Moines, Bravo Greater Des Moines, and Bravo Greater Des Moines, we consider ourselves good for the arts, good for business, and certainly good for greater Des Moines. You may find it interesting to note when it comes to a return on your investment that Bravo, over the years of its inception, 2005, 2006, has provided funding to more than 75 Des Moines-based arts, culture, and heritage organizations. In the last five years, that total amount awarded to these organizations is right at $10 million. Des Moines' contribution in the last five years has been at about $5 million, so we consider that a pretty good return on investment. We're proud of some of the work that we've been doing, in addition to responsibly and adequately fairly handling the funds that you all are so generous to provide. We were the first to establish and begin implementation of a regional cultural plan. We positioned that well so that we are now part of the Capital Crossroads Regional Planning Effort. We're also working on a new economic impact study, and the initial numbers are looking pretty good, showing the value and the importance of arts in the greater Des Moines area. We're also very proud of our Connecting Kids and Culture program that we partner with the Greater Des Moines Community Foundation on, providing funding to Polk, Dallas, and Orion County students on an annual basis totaling 45,000 students that are receiving funds to help receive appropriate curriculum-connected field experiences. So, again, we thank you very much. We are very appreciative, and we work very hard to do a very good job of handling the funds appropriately and garnering the greatest impact and support for the regional arts, culture, and heritage organizations. With that, did I see Sukhu come in? Very good. I'd like to introduce our current chair of the Bravo Board of Directors, Mr. Sukhu Radhya.
Thank you, MD. Thank you, MD. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to say a few words on behalf of Bravo. I am Sukhu Radhya, and I serve as the chair of Bravo. And I am also the CEO of Bankers Trust. And Mayor, County, and City Council members, I just simply want to express my appreciation as the chair of Bravo for your great support of this organization. Over the course of time, as I've seen this community evolve, all the great recognition that has been bestowed upon this community didn't happen by accident, didn't happen because we wanted it to happen. I think it happened because all of us collectively worked very hard from a regionalism standpoint, led by, of course, the city of Des Moines. And for that, we are all very, very grateful. As you know, Bravo serves as the convening point as the arts council for this region. And having entered into a dozen 20AT agreements, Bravo is run extremely efficiently and has very, very low overhead with the express purpose that, over the course of time, the two sevens that we receive out of the hotel motel tax, the majority of it, over 98 percent of it, has found its way to the various organizations. And that has translated in the seven-year existence of Bravo into $16 million, which is obviously very significant and has made a tremendous difference. The other thing I would point out, your representative to Bravo, Chris Hensley, has done an absolutely terrific job of representing the city. So, Chris, thank you for your great work. We really appreciate it. I recently wrote an op-ed piece for the Des Moines Register when it talked about the fact that this region has proven time and over what a great place it happens to be, not only to work but to also live. And, again, I think Bravo plays a very integral role in that whole equation. So, I simply just want to say, thank you for your great support. We really appreciate it. And with me, of course, other than MD, who is the executive director of Bravo, is one of our Bravo recipients, Richard Early, the executive director of the symphony. So, I'm going to turn it over to him as one of the receiving organizations to give you a sense of how much your dollars really mean to the symphony. But, again, I thank you for your contributions. Can I answer any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Sukhu, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Richard. Thank you, Sukhu, and thank you, Mayor, County, and members of Des Moines City Council. I must first mention that all of us at the Des Moines Symphony and Academy, our board of trustees, foundation board of directors, our over 90 professional musicians, and music director Joseph Junta, our 25-member academy faculty, our many volunteers, and our administrative staff owe much to the leadership of Sukhu Radhya, who is just now completing his second three-year term on our foundation board, and to City Council member Christine Hensley, who is completing her second year as president of the Symphony Board of Trustees. Thanks to the tremendous leadership of individuals like these, and thanks to the outstanding support and work of Bravo Greater Des Moines, arts and culture are flourishing in Des Moines. The Des Moines Symphony is the largest and most active professional performing arts-producing organization in the state. And next season, we will be celebrating our 75th anniversary. By now, after 17 years of our annual signature July 4th patriotic concert, free to the public on the grounds of the Iowa State Capitol, literally hundreds of thousands of central Iowans and visitors are familiar with and appreciative of the quality and community service of the Des Moines Symphony. But it is during our regular season of masterworks, pops concerts, and education and family concerts from September through May that our real mission of performing the great and lasting music of the symphonic repertoire is accomplished, benefiting an average attendance of over 25,000 concertgoers each year at the civic center of greater Des Moines. And it's during the regular school year that over 420 young people each week visit the Des Moines Symphony Academy in downtown Des Moines at the beautifully restored Temple for Performing Arts. They take private lessons with members of the Des Moines Symphony or from one of our professional music educators, and over 150 play in one of our three outstanding Des Moines Symphony youth orchestras. Those youth orchestras, by the way, attract the best and the brightest from all socioeconomic backgrounds. Graduates have gone on to some of the most outstanding music conservatories in this country. Others have gone on to the medical, law, engineering, and other professional schools. And one was just featured in the Des Moines Register as co-founder of Pinterest. And then there's the young youth orchestra alum just out of technical school who emailed his former youth symphony conductor Joe Junta last week to let him know he had just landed a good job as a diesel mechanic in Chicago and had just purchased his first season subscription to the Chicago Symphony. Now, our biggest hope for him, of course, is to realize that Des Moines is really where it's happening. To close, suffice it to say that without the important support of Bravo Greater Des Moines and its annual support of $92,400 in support of the Des Moines Symphony's $2.5 million annual budget, each year well over 100,000 citizens of Des Moines and central Iowa would have far fewer opportunities to experience live one of the greatest musical art forms, and 420 outstanding students would not have the opportunities at the Des Moines Symphony Academy. Thank you.
Any questions, anybody?
Can I just add, since I represent the city on the Bravo board, the Bravo board has just grown so significantly... the Bravo organization as a whole has just grown so significantly over the years from when we first implemented it. And the staffing that they have in place, the process that they have in place to go through and review grants, and the support that they've provided to so many of the amenities within the city of Des Moines is really significant. I might just add, Bravo has come forward and agreed to support increased operating revenue for the mechanical center. They did think that upon, and that was one of the first key pieces that fell into place to allow that to happen so that we could work with the county and get others in line. So, Bravo's done a great job, and it's really... I look at it as a model for other parts of the state, and we do get questions about how have we been able to do this with having so many partners together when you have much smaller groups throughout the state that really can't get it done. So, I think a lot of people are to be commended for originally bringing it about, making it happen, and continuing to make sure that it's run very effectively. So, thank you.
MD?
Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you very much. Absolutely.
All right, we have a couple more presentations here. And quite frankly, is BJ Supple in the... BJ, come on up. This is really a very special presentation, and actually, we're not presenting to BJ. He is going to present to us. And as part of the American Heart Fit Friendly Company Award presentation, you've got a special award to present.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. It's truly an honor this afternoon to announce that the city of Des Moines is being recognized as a fit-friendly company. For those of you who are not familiar with the fit-friendly company status, it's an award given by the American Heart Association, who I represent, and it's intended to be a catalyst for positive change in the workplace in regards to health and wellness. City of Des Moines is going to be one out of 15 companies here in Des Moines that are going to be recognized as fit-friendly, and that's a remarkable accomplishment by Heather and the staff, the Wellness Committee staff. It recognizes companies for making the health and wellness changes that are really essential to what we're wanting. Our governor here is trying to make us the healthiest state, and so it's great that the city employees are gravitating towards that, too. So, Heather Brady, Wellness Committee chairperson, is here to tell you more about what the city actually did. And I wanted to take a minute just to thank Heather very much for her hard work as well as the committee. Heather?
Thank you, BJ. The city of Des Moines has been recognized at the gold level, which means that we embrace at least nine criteria as outlined by the American Heart Association in the areas of physical activity, nutrition, and culture. We offer all employees physical activity support at the worksite, including lunchtime walks with the city manager, yoga on the lawn, athletic tournaments such as tennis, wiffle ball, kickball, and dodgeball, family swimming and ice skating events, and participation in the Live Healthy Iowa and Burst Your Thirst challenges. We've provided nutrition and healthy eating information in quarterly wellness newsletters and health promotion communications, and we've offered healthy meals to employees. We promote a culture of wellness at the worksite by offering CPR and AED training. And as a fit-friendly company, we've adopted the spirit of the initiative and have the vision to try improving the health and wellness of employees of the city. I would like to thank the Wellness Committee, which if you'd all stand up, please, thank you, for their efforts in improving the health and wellness of our employees. On behalf of the city of Des Moines, the Wellness Committee would like to thank the American Heart Association for this award.
Thank you.
Let's bring all of our committee up. Come on, everybody. You guys are... Now, come on. You guys aren't supposed to leave. You're supposed to stay. We've got an exciting meeting about to start here. All right, we have some other folks in the audience here today, and they are dressed up in some very easy-to-see outfits. And so, Pat, why don't you and the whole group come up? And we've got a special proclamation. Mr. Stowe, I think you should be part of this wonderful event. Pat, are you going to be the spokesperson?
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson. All right, this is National Public Works Week, and Mr. Anderson's going to tell us what it's all about. You're on.
I got it in my pocket. My name is Tyrone Anderson, Jr., and behalf of all of our coworkers, all of my coworkers in the Public Works Department, we would like to thank the public and Mayor, County, for recognizing us for National Public Works Week. And here are some of the other committee members that helped us put this together.
My name's Eric James Ross. I am here representing the sewer division.
I'm Marty McKinney. I'm here representing Engineering Department.
I'm Frank Holman. I'm here for the stormwater division.
I'm Fran Dayton, and I'm with the street department.
Hi, Pat, because this is the deputy public works director. And we have with us Bill Stowe, the public works director.
Who, for some reason, is speechless. Mr. Stowe? Thank you. Well, we'll look forward to anything that you have to say later this evening. But in... as part of this, the National Public Works Week, we have the following proclamation: Whereas public works personnel create and maintain infrastructure and provide essential services for everyday life and economic growth, providing first responder leadership in floods, snowstorms, and natural disasters; and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work services and maintenance programs such as sanitation, sewers, streets, forestry, wastewater reclamation; and whereas the protection and preservation of the area's natural resources for the benefit of future generations depends on the sustainability of these services and programs; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these functions, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works and engineering officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the departments of public works and engineering are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they provide. Now, therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to 26th, 2012, as National Public Works Week in the city of Des Moines, and I call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works and engineering officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life right here in the city of Des Moines. Let's give him a great big hand. Thank you. We'll take a quick picture and... Perfect. Everybody's smiling, eyes open. All right, we'll start shortly. Before we move on to our city council meeting, we have the city of Des Moines Municipal Public Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for May 21st. And I'll ask the clerk if she can get in her seat to please take a roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer? We have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the submittal of the Public Housing Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Board Communication Number 12-259. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? And I'll ask Chris, anything to say about this? Chris? Doug? You want to say... unless there's something wonderful to say, you don't have to, but... It's a great program. All right. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve the submittal? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same. The item passes. If we could have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Opposed. We said adjourned. The city council meeting will start in about five minutes. So, everybody take a quick break, and we'll be right back with you. All right, I would also ask, just from my point of view, Mr. Manager and Mr. Attorney, that certainly I think our ongoing concern has to do with just the proliferation of alcohol sales around the city, not to single out one particular entity, but certainly that we do have, you know, ongoing concerns about liquor sales, sometimes on four corners within a block, and at four different places. And I think that we've heard it from neighborhoods, we've heard it from individual residents, we've heard it from business owners, that they find a problem. Not that any of these businesses, per se, have a specific problem, but I think that we need to have a deeper, wider understanding of the issue as a whole, so we do look forward to your recommendations coming back.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we will do that, and, you know, there was a suggestion this morning, I think actually it was Mr. Moore's, that talked specifically about the fact that there are some locations where you see a real concentration of these establishments in one particular area. That led to the point, I think, that Phil Delafield made, that maybe what we ought to be looking at are some separation stipulations, so that you don't end up with that kind of a pattern. So that will clearly be one of the things that we look at and bring back to you at the workshop.
Okay. The next item is item five, which is an item to approve alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. A through J are a string of Walgreens stores at various locations around the city. That item has been pulled for discussion. So who would like to open that up?
Well, let me ask this question of legal, since we've just passed a moratorium that expands, it makes this not eligible for a liquor license.
I believe that's correct. What I would suggest, however, is that council move to deny the Class E liquor licenses based on the moratorium just enacted, but to the extent that any of the establishments A through J on number five would have had a beer or wine renewal included in the E liquor, that that actually be moved to approve. So in other words, a motion, and it can be a joint motion if council so inclined, to deny the Class E liquor license based on the moratorium, but to approve any beer and wine renewal license for any of these establishments that may have been included.
So I will make the motion then that we deny Class E liquor license, but allow any beer and wine licenses to move forward.
At these locations?
At these locations, listed in five A through J.
All right, is there anyone in the audience to comment on this move? Any comment by council? We have a motion. Okay. All right, and I will vote no on that item as well.
Do we need a motion on the consent agenda then?
Well, still four to three.
I'll vote no on Z.
Do I have a five? Can I suggest we have a motion for everything but Z, and then I'll make a different motion?
Sorry, we're going to pull four Z.
Okay, we're going to pull Z for a quick motion.
So this is a vote on the consent agenda, everything but what's listed and Z.
This is specifically on four Z. We've passed the bounds except for the ones that have been polled here.
We haven't passed the consent yet. Should we do the consent?
Okay. We're going to do consent first. We have, except for the one that was just polled additionally. And Mr. Coleman, you pulled that one?
Yeah, yeah, Christine was the first to vote no.
Well, she's voted no, but we need to quickly have it for discussion. Okay, so any other items to be pulled on the consent agenda for further discussion? Again, these are items three through forty-three. Seeing none?
I'll move.
We have a motion?
Seven yes.
All right, so let's quickly go to item four Z. Mr. Coleman?
I'll let Christine speak, but I pulled it, and she has some police records. I live out there, and I'm aware that there have been similar problems to what we've experienced other places in the city. Again, we have a hard time pinning this directly on, for legal purposes, the operators, because they've been in the alley behind the building or the parking lot next to it, but there was a shooting in the last 12 months, and it's been a problem there. I would suggest that before we act on this, we send it to our city manager's office and the city attorney to enter into some discussions, a framework being the kinds of operating procedures that the council has come to know the last two months, and to see if we can't get them, manager, you working with the police department and other things, to consider some of those operational best practices that we found. Does that sound like a legal motion?
It's certainly a lengthy motion.
I said legal.
Oh, legal. I think that's fine if council wants to continue this matter and give us an opportunity to proceed similarly to what was done with the Fast Mart and move ahead, that would be preferable to simply denying the license, which would, as you know, be akin to a revocation and probably create problems later on legally. So this would certainly be a preference for your legal department.
As I understand, it's not related to the Fast Mart, even though that used to be an oasis?
That's correct.
This has nothing to do with the Fast Mart?
That's what we've been told.
So that was your motion?
Yeah, is that okay?
So the motion sounds a little less lengthy and more like what the city attorney said.
But I get credit for it.
Yeah. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Seeing none, item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Okay, next items are four SS. Do you want to do these all at once, Mr. Moore, TT, and UU? Okay, Mr. Moore?
At the last meeting, we approved an outdoor facility where people could go out, I imagine, and smoke and drink and whatever. Last Saturday or Friday morning, I received a complaint that they now have outdoor speakers, and they were playing them loud enough that a neighbor had to go ask them to turn them down. Checked with Phil Porman, and he said, no, they do not have a background sound permit, which they would be required to have to have outdoor speakers. I have been up there, they do have a couple pole-mounted, really nice electro-voice speakers. I feel like we should support these three special permits as long as they come into compliance on the background sound permit that either...
I'll move.
All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Hallie has indicated to me he's got an amendment.
And I do as well.
I think we might have the same one. I was just going to move extra item one right after the consent agenda and move item five right after extra item one. Is that...
Okay, we could do that. Or do... That's what he's suggesting, I think. So we're going to take the extra item one and move it forward to right after the approval of the consent agenda, and, well, actually, right after we have this vote, and we will move item five forward with it at the same time. Is that pretty much what everybody wants to do, right? All right, other than that, any other changes?
I'll move the amended agenda.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes. The item first to appear, hold on one second. The extra item is a consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to further regulate the allowed location of businesses engaged in the sale of alcoholic liquor for off-premise consumption and imposing an expanded temporary moratorium. Mr. Manager, would you quickly want to outline this amendment?
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have Jeff do it.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This amendment would actually amend the prior moratorium whereby the zoning classification, which is currently in effect, is being considered for revision, and council has made a determination that because of certain detrimental impacts to the community in terms of the density of liquor licenses and businesses and the attendant adverse effects that some of those businesses may have, that there's a need to reexamine zoning. That process is underway at the staff level and should be back to council shortly. This proposed moratorium would, in fact, expand the current moratorium to include those establishments that are over, that are 10,000 square feet or greater, up to 40,000 square feet.
Okay. Any comments? Anybody, Ms. Hensley?
I support this, and I believe it represents what we talked about this morning, so I appreciate us being able to take action on this tonight. The question I would have, I know I've had several calls or, you know, inquiries about what does that actually mean, and I know that staff's working on it. How soon will we have some preliminary language as to what will be the different options so that we'll allow adequate public comment?
We have a meeting scheduled for later this week, I believe Thursday afternoon, where we'll begin to consider exactly, I think, Mr. Delafield from CD explained this morning, there's going to be really three levels of regulations as options for the city council, and we expect to have the meeting on Thursday afternoon to flesh that out a little bit more and begin to focus exactly what it is so that we can present to council as an option, and we'll have language very shortly thereafter, potentially by the 11th, but certainly by the 25th of June.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll move extra item one.
All right, item's been moved. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, extra item one has been moved.
Six yes, one no.
All right, I would also ask, just from my point of view, Mr. Manager and Mr. Attorney, that certainly I think our ongoing concern has to do with just the proliferation of alcohol sales around the city, not to single out one particular entity, but certainly that we do have, you know, ongoing concerns about liquor sales, sometimes on four corners within a block, and at four different places. And I think that we've heard it from neighborhoods, we've heard it from individual residents, we've heard it from business owners, that they find a problem. Not that any of these businesses, per se, have a specific problem, but I think that we need to have a deeper, wider understanding of the issue as a whole, so we do look forward to your recommendations coming back.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we will do that, and, you know, there was a suggestion this morning, I think actually it was Mr. Moore's, that talked specifically about the fact that there are some locations where you see a real concentration of these establishments in one particular area. That led to the point, I think, that Phil Delafield made, that maybe what we ought to be looking at are some separation stipulations, so that you don't end up with that kind of a pattern. So that will clearly be one of the things that we look at and bring back to you at the workshop.
Okay. The next item is item five, which is an item to approve alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. A through J are a string of Walgreens stores at various locations around the city. That item has been pulled for discussion. So who would like to open that up?
Well, let me ask this question of legal, since we've just passed a moratorium that's got, that expands, it makes this not eligible for a liquor license.
I believe that's correct. What I would suggest, however, is that council move to deny the Class E liquor licenses based on the moratorium just enacted, but to the extent that any of the establishments A through J on number five would have had a beer or wine renewal included in the E liquor, that that actually be moved to approve. So in other words, a motion, and it can be a joint motion if council so inclined, to deny the Class E liquor license based on the moratorium, but to approve any beer and wine renewal license for any of these establishments that may have been included.
So I will make the motion then that we deny Class E liquor license, but allow any beer and wine licenses to move forward.
At these locations?
At these locations, listed in five A through J.
All right, is there anyone in the audience to comment on this move? Any comment by council? We have a motion. Okay?
Seven yes.
All right. The next item is item three, which is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 43. These items are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without further discussion unless somebody, either a city council member or someone from the audience, asks to have it pulled for clarification or further discussion. Tonight, item 4Z, Mrs. Hensley votes no. Item 4SS, TT, and UU, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. We've just taken care of five AJ, and I'm assuming that Mr. Moore and Mrs. Hensley, you don't wish to speak on those anymore.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Item six, council members, County and Moore vote no. Item nine, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. And item 26, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak.
Mayor?
Yes.
I am a no vote on 4Z as well.
Okay. All right, and I will vote no on that item as well.
Do we need to make, you need a motion on the consent agenda then?
Well, still four to three.
I'll vote no on Z.
Do I have a five? Yeah.
Should we go...
Can I suggest we have a motion for everything but Z, and then I'll make a different motion?
Sorry, we're going to pull 4Z.
Okay, we're going to pull Z for a quick motion.
So this is a vote on the consent agenda, everything but what's listed and Z.
This is specifically on 4Z. We've passed the bounds except for the ones that have been polled here.
We haven't passed the consent yet. Should we do the consent?
Okay.
Consent first.
Okay, we're going to do consent first. We have, except for the one that was just polled additionally. And Mr. Coleman, you pulled that one? 4Z?
Yeah, Christine was the first to vote no.
Well, she's voted no, but we need to quickly have it for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other items to be pulled on the consent agenda for further discussion? Again, these are items three through 43. Any other items other than the ones that have been already mentioned? Seeing none?
I'll move.
We have a motion?
Seven yes.
All right, so let's quickly go to item 4Z. Mr. Coleman?
I'll let Christine speak, but I pulled it, and she has some police records. I live out there, and I'm aware that there have been similar problems to what we've experienced other places in the city. Again, we have a hard time pinning this directly on, for legal purposes, the operators, because they've been in the alley behind the building or the parking lot next to it, but there was a shooting in the last 12 months, and it's been a problem there. I would suggest that before we act on this, we send it to our city manager's office and the city attorney to enter into some discussions, a framework being the kinds of operating procedures that the council has come to know the last two months, and to see if we can't get them, manager, you working with the police department and other things, to consider some of those operational best practices that we found. Does that sound like a legal motion?
It's certainly a lengthy motion, council member.
I said legal.
Oh, legal. I think that's fine if council wants to continue this matter and give us an opportunity to proceed similarly to what was done with the Fast Mart and move ahead, that would be preferable to simply denying the license, which would, as you know, be akin to a revocation and probably create problems later on legally. So this would certainly be a preference for your legal department.
And as I understand, it's not related to the Fast Mart, even though...
That's correct.
That used to be an oasis.
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the Fast Mart?
That's what we've been told.
Okay.
So that was your motion?
Yeah, is that okay?
So the motion sounds a little less lengthy and more like what the city attorney said.
But I get credit for it.
Yeah. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Seeing none, item's been moved.
Seven yes.
Okay, next items are 4SS. Do you want to do these all at once, Mr. Moore, TT, and UU? Okay, Mr. Moore?
At the last meeting, we approved an outdoor facility where people could go out, I imagine, and smoke and drink and whatever. Last Saturday or Friday morning, I received a complaint that they now have outdoor speakers, and they were playing them loud enough that a neighbor had to go ask them to turn them down. Checked with Phil Porman, and he said, no, they do not have a background sound permit, which they would be required to have to have outdoor speakers. I have been up there, they do have a couple pole-mounted, really nice electro-voice speakers. I feel like we should support these three special permits as long as they come into compliance on the background sound permit that either...
Well, she's voted no, but we need to quickly have it for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other items to be pulled on the consent agenda for further discussion? Again, these are items three through forty-three. Any other items other than the ones that have been already mentioned? Seeing none?
I'll move.
We have a motion?
Seven, yes.
All right, so let's quickly go to item four Z. Mr. Coleman?
I'll let Christine speak, but I pulled it, and she has some police records. I live out there, and I'm aware that there have been similar problems to what we've experienced other places in the city. Again, we have a hard time pinning this directly on, for legal purposes, the operators because they've been in the alley behind the building or the parking lot next to it, but there was a shooting in the last twelve months, and it's been a problem there. I would suggest that before we act on this, we send it to our city manager's office and the city attorney to enter into some discussions, a framework being the kinds of operating procedures that the council has come to know the last two months, and to see if we can't get them, manager, you working with the police department and other things, to consider some of those operational best practices that we found. Does that sound like a legal motion?
It's certainly a lengthy motion, Councilmember.
I said legal.
Oh, legal. I think that's fine if council wants to continue this matter and give us an opportunity to proceed similarly to what was done with the Fast Mart and move ahead. That would be preferable to simply denying the license, which would, as you know, be akin to a revocation and probably create problems later on legally. So this would certainly be a preference for your legal department.
As I understand, it's not related to the Fast Mart, even though
That's correct.
that used to be in Oasis?
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the Fast Mart?
That's what we've been told.
Okay.
So that was your motion?
Yeah. Is that okay?
So the motion sounds a little less lengthy and more like what the city attorney said.
But I get credit for it.
Yeah. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Seeing none? Item's been moved?
Seven, yes.
Okay. Next items are four SS. Do you want to do these all at once, Mr. Moore, TT, and UU? Okay? Mr. Moore?
At the last meeting, we approved an outdoor facility where people could go out, I imagine, and smoke and drink and whatever. Last Saturday or Friday morning, I received a complaint that they now have outdoor speakers, and they were playing them loud enough that a neighbor had to go ask them to turn them down. Checked with Phil Porman, and he said, no, they do not have a background sound permit, which they would be required to have to have outdoor speakers. I have been up there. They do have a couple pole-mounted really nice electro-voice speakers. I feel like we should support these three special permits as long as they come into compliance on the background sound permit, that either they obtain their background sound permit or remove the speakers. So I guess what I'm willing to do is move these three, SS, TT, and UU, as long as they come into compliance with a background sound permit or remove the speakers in the meantime.
Sound like a reasonable motion, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody in the audience to speak on this? Seeing none, we have...
Just asking a question, Mr. Moore.
Yep.
Mr. Moore, just to clarify your motion, is your intent to say so long as they comply with the city's sound ordinance, or are you adding additional provisions on top of that?
No, as long as they either remove the speakers and/or receive their background sound permit.
Seven, yes.
Item nine is approving a change order number one with Genco Construction for additional work on the Grand Avenue Bridge over Walnut Creek, not to exceed $129,000. Council Communication number twelve dash two fifty-four. Mrs. Hensley?
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this off to have just a very brief discussion about this change order, $129,000. It is a penalty that will be assessed against the city due to us not moving forward with this project this, right now, and waiting until next spring. Many of us were involved in the telephone conversations that we had with CenturyLink when we were in Washington DC because it became an issue then, but I just feel it's important that the city not bear all of the responsibility for this penalty because I think that there's room on the other side of the equation as well. And so I just want to make a public statement about that, that everybody's going to need to be able to, need to participate in this, and I'll let legal minds move forward with that. But I think it's important that everybody come up to the table and do their share. So I'm going to move this item with regret based upon the fact that the penalty is being assessed against the city on this item.
All right, your speaker.
My name is Michael Sadler. I'm with CenturyLink. We office downtown Des Moines, 925 High Street. I'll take for a minute to address something for Hensley's concerns with the delay on the Walnut Creek Bridge. I certainly appreciate your concern and your disappointment in delaying the project until next spring. I will say I've been in many discussions with our engineering team and others within CenturyLink that I've been closer to the project, been working with your staff since 2010, I believe. And I think we would say that there is blame to go around. A key item was our inability to get an easement from the city just in March of this year. That's really what sent the project behind the days that you wanted it to be completed. So we're happy to discuss this further with staff going forward, want to make sure that you understand that it wasn't just one party at fault.
Understood.
If you have any questions.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. And I appreciate your responsiveness in getting back to us.
Frank, did you get a report of why we should move the...
I think we had asked for that, but I don't know if we have tonight.
Maybe not tonight, but in this part of the legal work.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move item nine.
So are you willing to consider, do you understand all of that then?
I think it's subject to negotiation.
Okay, seven.
Right. Not I think, would be subject to negotiation.
Seven, yes.
All right. That takes us to item twenty-six, City Manager Communication. This item is submitting travel and training requests for Christopher Latcham and Skip Moore. Council Communication number twelve dash two forty-five. Mrs. Hensley?
I just am asking the question regarding, and Skip, I need your assistance on this. The purpose that, because it was very vague and the blue letter, and then does it make sense to have, is this a staff-related type of trouble? I was just trying to get a feel of it.
No, I'm glad you asked. It was vague, and it was incorrect. The request is to meet with Tom Tidwell, who's the Director of the U.S. Forestry Service. This came out of a question that I gave to the undersecretary while in DC, and I also asked...
Governor Bill Sack?
Not Governor, but Secretary Bill Sack.
Former Governor.
And he suggested that we meet with Tom. He actually said, ask, invite him to Des Moines. I think it's going to be almost impossible to get him here. What I would like to do is take advantage of the fact that the National Urban and Community Forestry Advisory Council's meeting, two and a half days previous to this meeting, our mayor happens to be the representative for all cities of 50,000 or more, and I believe Frank is going to be able to attend this meeting, and I'm going to ask Larry Wiseman, who is also the Chair of NUCFAC, to attend this meeting. The real issue is that the USDA, the vast majority of what they do is forestry, even though you'd think it's agriculture, it's not. It's forestry, but yet we hear more about ag than we do forestry. Our forestry department did ask for a grant this year, which we missed the cut on in order to be able to do a tree inventory citywide of city trees. The real issue that we have is that the forestry department, forestry division, the USDA ag, really isn't focusing in on urban forestry. They're watching the timber industry more than they are urban forestry, and I want to take this as an opportunity to sit down with them and begin the dialogue of starting to bring the focus into the municipalities and the help that we're going to be needing, especially with Emerald Ashmore looming on the horizon. We're looking just six to seven million dollars to remove our ash trees on the streets alone, and we're definitely going to be asking for help from the U.S. Forestry Service. So I understand people's concern on this. When I first looked at it, Frank and I talked about it, the thought was I would stay overnight. Well, it was $650 a night for a hotel room, so I scratched that, and I actually won't be coming back. If I go on the earlier flight with Frank, that would cost me another, or cost us another $300. So I got this as low as I can, but I would hate to miss this opportunity. I think it's where we start the dialogue on this and hopefully get some dollars rolling the way that the municipalities around the country and especially Des Moines need the money.
Okay, thank you. I'll move item twenty-six.
If I could just ask another question, would it be advantageous for the mayor just to meet with him while he's in town a couple days prior?
Well, I think with my expertise and the background in urban forestry, and Larry doesn't have that background either, I think that if the two of us, if not all three of us, it's going to help.
Okay, that completes the consent agenda and will take us straight to the hearing First hearing item is item fifty, which is on the appeal from Nicholas Welfa of 201 Locust Street, Department 134, regarding administrative hearing officer's decision on impounded vehicle. Is Nicholas in the audience? Would you come forward, sir? Oh, yeah. Give us your name and your address and jump right in here.
Nicholas Welfa, address is still on Locust Street, Department 134. I realize that probably my intent, the individuals who appear here having violated parking law, don't realize that ignorance of the law is no excuse, but I just want to let you know that I'm part of the tent that does understand that, and I'm not going to waste your time. When I came in for the administrative hearing, I was under the impression that my vehicle was towed or impounded for violating parking meter time, or having outstanding tickets, possibly under someone else's name, as it was a brand-new vehicle and a new license plate for me. Now that I realize that I was towed and impounded for being parked in the spot violating Section 11436117, I'm even more convinced that I should be fighting this ticket. At no point during the parking enforcement officer's testimony at the administrative hearing did she state which side of the street the bagging had been done on, despite the administrative ruling of the hearing officer stating that the parking enforcement officer did indicate the south side of the street. This is important because this is what I contend. There were no bags covering the meters on the south side of Locust Street, and certainly not on the parking meter where I was parked. I'd like to establish this is presently my word versus the parking enforcement officer, and ask her to place state under oath that the meter I was parked at on the Locust Street Bridge was bagged before or after the ticket was issued. Once we've established that she's willing to say that under oath, and if you've decided her word over mine, I'll consult with legal counsel regarding who I can subpoena in my defense when this goes to court. You had a bus driver in the morning in question, one of my neighbors, someone who works at the YMCA across the street, someone who exercises at the YMCA, the towing service or the administrative contact, the Civic Center itself, just to find out which side of the street was bagged. Lastly, I'd like to consult legally too about if the department, parking department, has ever made a mistake and bagged the wrong side of the bridge, or, and this is probably the biggest point, if it would be worth subpoenaing parking department records to find out if the department was actually supposed to have bagged both sides of the Walnut and Locust Street bridges and did not do so that particular day. I honestly believe that I have a lot of options, and my small impounded towing fees have not been paid. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Any clarification or either for the council or for Nicholas regarding his appeal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, Mr. Welfa, was your vehicle parked on the north or south side of Locust Street?
South side.
I would direct council's attention to Exhibit Five, which is the transcript. Although Mr. Welfa has said here today and also in his written materials that at no time did the parking enforcement officer say, under oath, where it was. If you read about midway down, Parking Enforcement Officer Kim Robinson said, "We had a Civic Center performance in which 35 to 40 buses were coming downtown, and we parked them on the Locust Street Bridge and the Walnut Street Bridge, the south side of Locust, north side of Walnut. The meters were bagged for the buses." I submit that that's very clear, that she said the meters were bagged where the buses were parked, south side of Locust, the meters were bagged for the buses. The fact that she didn't then redundantly say the meters were bagged for the buses on the south side after she had just said where the buses parked, I don't think is necessary, and I think that, given that, I think council can determine that there was actually, contrary to Mr. Welfa's claim here today and in his written materials, that there was in fact evidence that the hearing officer said under oath that where the bagging was and where the buses were, so.
And would it be accurate, Jeff, had the individual been out to move his car in a timely manner, this would not be an issue? I mean, so it parked overnight, and it would have had to have been removed by seven o'clock in the morning, and then it, because it was after, I think it was 7:45 or 7:37, that they actually came and towed his car?
I think that's a reasonable conclusion from reading the materials.
Okay, that was the way I interpreted it.
Anyone else have any questions, either of the witness or the city attorney?
I'll make a motion to uphold the hearing officer's decision.
All right. Mr. Welfa, the hearing officer's decision has been upheld.
He left.
He left. Let's send him a note and let him know. Okay, item fifty-one, on the application of MPI Limo Services LLC to increase the number of limousines operated under their certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate limousine services from eleven to fifteen in number, Council Communication number twelve dash two forty-three. Is there anybody here from MPI Limo Services to speak? Are there others to speak either for or against this? Seeing none? Give us your name and address, sir.
Mark Kirshner, 3329 109th Street in Urbaneale, Iowa. I'm the owner of MPI Limo Services, just asking to increase my fleet by four vehicles from eleven to fifteen.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Kirshner regarding his request to increase his number from eleven to fifteen?
I would say seeing nobody here to speak against it, and the recommendation from staff is to approve it, I'll make the motion that we do so. I'll move item fifty-one.
See how the vote comes up, but you have a motion. Anybody else here to speak on this? Thank you. We have a motion. Coleman?
Seven, yes.
All right. Item fifty-two, on an appeal for relief from moratorium by Tony Dassin to allow sale of alcoholic liquor for off-premise consumption at the BP Service Station Superstop at Southeast 14th and Murray Streets. A is a motion to deny the appeal, or B, an alternate, which is to grant the appeal. One is a consideration of Class E liquor license with a Class B wine and C beer privileges for the Superstop at 727 Southeast 14th Street.
My name is Alfredo Parrish, and I represent Mr. Dassin. I, and Mr. Mayor and City Council, I emailed this afternoon the last document. You may not have received it, so I'll pass this around, which is a document supporting the hardship from the Small Business Administration loan that Mr. Dassin has. I'll give you a brief description of the background of the store and his ownership of the store. I want to make it clear that he's not here challenging the policy of the moratorium, but simply to challenge the hardship or try to take advantage of the hardship provision, which is item number three in the moratorium of April 9th of 2012. Mr. Dassin owned the store and had a license for it for approximately three to four years. He then leased the store out to AB Food Mark for two years, who had a liquor license there, and then he leased it out again to a new, let's see, was Mr. Sahi for a three-year lease. Mr. Sahi, three months into the lease, breached it, then returned the property back to Mr. Dassin. As you may know, he owns a couple of other businesses in the Des Moines area. It's not had any difficulty in recent years operating the business. The hardship that the moratorium places on him is as follows. Once the lease came back to him, he received the inventory back, which was liquor also. He and his wife went down and applied and got the beer license, but didn't apply for the liquor license because at that point he did not have sufficient financial resources to apply for the liquor license, and this was in October of 2011, which would then put him in a position of not having the liquor license when the moratorium came into effect. What that does is put him in a position where he's now carrying a note, both to the Iowa State Bank, he has his taxes that are now delinquent, and he also, on the property, has an SBA loan, which the most recent document supports. What we're asking is that the economic hardship imposed on him, at least for his narrow exception, not as a challenge to the moratorium, that this business has had a license for approximately five or six continuous years, except for October, when his, let's see, ended up breaching the lease agreement. With that in mind, what we're asking you to do is allow him, with his beer license, to have a liquor license to go hand in, hand... to have the liquor license to go hand in, hand with the liquor license that he had. He employs approximately six people full-time, about three people part-time. This does not fly in the face of the moratorium that you have in existence now, and he's not challenging that, but all he is saying that the moratorium and the timing of it, and he concedes the fact that he didn't apply for the liquor license back in October, when he could have done it and the moratorium would not have been in existence. And with his background, he would have qualified for the license at that point. He's prepared to answer any questions that you may have on that point. He's seated right back here, and I'm prepared to try to answer as many questions as you might have on the particular hardship that this has created.
Brian, any thoughts?
I do have some thoughts. I struggled with this all day, knowing what I know about it. In this particular case, given the fact, did you say he was only out of the liquor license for one month because of the transition?
Well, in three months, in October, when the new owner came in, he and his wife came down, made the application, didn't apply for the liquor license. So he's not had the liquor license now since the person who breached the contract left him basically a hole in the bag for the full price of the mortgage to the bank and to SBA. That's exactly right.
And the concern that we have with others, BP, or the, this particular BP station is in a very remote area that is not going to have a lot of neighborhood traffic to it. And I, like I said earlier, I struggled today with this, and I know there's a hardship in getting this letter. Alfredo, would you be willing to sort of, like some of these other restrictions we've had on these others that have applied, I mean, is this something that we could sit down with them and do something that we did similar, that was similar to the Fast Smart? Or are we in a different situation than we were with Fast Smart? Jeff?
I think we're in a different situation because the moratorium is really zoning-based. The Fast Smart is really based on licensing. And we've made every effort, including in the moratorium amendment this afternoon, to keep those two separate because I think if we go into the licensing portion of regulation, we're on some thin ice there.
Okay. Based on the information that I have, my motion because of the hardship will be to grant the appeal. I think it's, I think it's a very unique situation, and I agree with you, and I think we're in danger of a very bad situation here of, which would be completely different than some of these others. So I didn't mean to sort of make the motion before people discuss, but the motion will be to grant the appeal. Is that what you're looking for?
That is exactly what we're looking for.
Alternate being?
Well, actually to grant the relief, Brian.
Well, to grant the appeal and the consideration of the liquor license under number B1.
Okay. All right, any other questions from here?
What other properties does your client own?
He has a liquor store in Hubble and then University, that we did work out the agreement when they had the shooting up there, I think about two and a half years ago, where he worked with the city in setting up security, et cetera. Exactly. He's now opening a barbershop up in that area too.
About 21 or 22?
2100 University, and he's working with the Neighborhood Association pretty closely. At least the group that now has at least is working with them and going to their meetings. They've not had any real issues with him since he worked through those problems after the shooting.
Do you mind if we ask the Police Department to confirm any information they might have? It might be unexpected.
I think this is the one we had the anonymous letter from a month or two months ago.
Right.
Which he was willing to work with the neighborhood and the neighborhood was okay with his renewal at that time, two months ago.
All right, Bob, any other questions that maybe we could?
I was wondering if we have the address on the one on Hubble, Mr. Parrish?
We did. I went through planning and zoning for that, but it's a liquor store, if you drive in. I don't know the address off the top of my head because...
Maybe he does.
2501 Hubble.
2501 Hubble. Okay.
That's the new one.
That is the new liquor store.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, Lieutenant Jeff Edwards, Des Moines Police Department, Vice Narcotics Control Section. If you have any questions for me and regarding Mr. Dassin, I can help you with that.
Are you, are you?
Mr. Moore, or I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Are you aware of any problems at this particular location?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
I think the other thing, if, he also owns property on Hubble and then the 2101, I want to say it is, on, in, well, it's actually in Hallie's Ward on University. Anything you know about the situation there since we went through the?
I don't have figures for the, for the Hubble address. I'm not aware of any ongoing issues right there at this time. I am a little concerned. We have seen an increase in traffic and some problems associated with University Grocery that I've got our night vice narcotics folks, as well as our set team, is monitoring that, continues to monitor that, and will be watching that through the summer and see how that shakes out.
The Hubble one's only been open for about a month.
Is there any other advice that you could give to Mr. Dassin that would be helpful in helping you monitor that situation up there?
Mr. Dassin has met with us, met with me personally before, has been receptive to suggestions that we've made in the past and has been willing to come down and talk with us. Mr. Dassin, I think, needs to be very proactive in monitoring and controlling his own businesses to make sure that there are not problems and that any problems that he sees, he takes care of himself before we have to take the appropriate action. That was my conversation with Mr. Dassin when he opened up the store or got the store back at 14th and Maury, and that would be my recommendation for him going forward with his university store as well.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? And I guess I didn't understand that the Hubble store just came on in the last month. Is that correct?
That is correct. I came before planning and zoning on that.
Okay, okay.
And they did approve it. It's just a stand-along liquor store to open Taco John's, I believe was.
Okay, but it just came on in the last month, so you're pleading hardship here when, back in October, he didn't have funds to get the Class E liquor license, but he was able to open a new store in the last month. So I guess I'm questioning the hardship case.
Okay, let me see if I can explain that a little bit better. He was, he is in fact now taking all of his funds from his other businesses and paying the note and trying to get caught up with the taxes on the Maury store that basically fell apart, that he thought he had leased out for about $800 per month. And that's the lease that was breached. I don't think at that point, as I recall, he was anticipating that happening. And that's basically what's now causing the hardship, the reason he's had to, as a banker says, transfer all of this money just to stay, keep the Maury Street address open.
But just the timeline?
Correct.
He had to take that store back over last October of '11, correct?
You know, I have to look at the date, Councilman Hensley. I didn't...
So you, you, the lease was breached in October of 2011.
Yes, ma'am.
And so then, at that point, you could not go forward and get the Class E liquor license? So when did you acquire the other facility on Hubble? What was the timeline for that?
I think after that, because I was trying, that store I'm leasing, even for that, to open that store, I was not having enough money for the inventory. So that's why I was looking for a tenant to even to rent the store. So 2501 Hubble, I'm renting it now.
And so when did you start renting the Hubble store?
I rented it about two, three months ago.
Two, three months.
But it was, I didn't open it even like the license was granted. I was not having funds to open the store. I mean, every month, even I was losing the money on the license fee I paid. So finally, I found a tenant. I mean, and he put the inventory, he invested the money for certain improvements over there. So I'm renting that store. I don't pay it.
And what has happened with the inventory, once he took that back, Councilman Hensley, the inventory was frozen in his store over on Maury. They won't let him sell his heart liquor. Now, there was one incident that occurred because the employee thought they still had the full license, and he apologized for doing that, but actually, the inventory is now, the Liquor Commission told him to take it and store it. So he's taken all the inventory that he took back once the lease was breached, and now he has it stored. So he hasn't been able to sell in liquor now in, what, five or six months from that store. So he's had no income, except to take the money from his lease and try to pay the mortgage. And he's current on it right now, but as you can see from the banker, he's struggling trying to make that happen.
Any other questions, Brian?
Is he going to pursue another lessee in this, in this location, or is this, now he's just going to take?
Well, right now, his wife is operating along with several other employees. If he had a liquor license, it would make it more of an optimum situation for someone to do it, but he's actually the person who is in charge. For instance, when he left the 21st and University area, when we worked out the arrangement with the city, at that point, he kept security going, even though he had leased the store out, but he kept his obligations with the city to make sure he was in compliance with his agreement.
So is it fair, so are you saying that the store on University now, he leases that to?
He does.
Okay, so you're not involved in that store at all? Maybe that goes back to why we're seeing some issues here.
He has a barbershop there and, but he does lease it out. That's what he's doing, but he's still the owner of the property, and he made the improvements on it. Correct.
Mr. Moore?
In his letter here from Greg Sweet, Vice President of Iowa Business Growth, it refers to a devastating fire at another location. Could you tell me what the location was where he had a devastating fire?
Yes, I have another store on 2635 Adventure Land Drive, right across from Adventure Land Drive.
2635 what?
Adventure Land Drive in Altoona.
Adventure Land?
Altoona?
Yes, Altoona, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Does anybody have anything else? Okay, our attorney has a couple of questions.
Thank you.
Counsel, the roll call that would grant the appeal provides specifically that counsel would have to find that it's the inability to sell alcohol that's creating the hardship. As you look at the letter that Councilmember Moore just spoke about from Mr. Sweet, it seems to list a number of substantial hardships that he's had in his, in his business and personal life, but I was wondering if you could maybe tie in better for counsel how it is that the inability to sell alcohol relates that that's creating the hardship?
I believe I can do that. If you go back to when the business was operating with the lessor through Mr. Sahi before it actually, he breached the lease, he was paying the $8,800 that basically serviced the loan, the taxes, et cetera. When the, when that actually ended, he has then had to fund it with no inventory, taken the, I think, almost 50% of the inventory back. He's had no income from the liquor. Now, if you also look at the other material that's in there, he makes no profit from the sale of the gasoline. Matter of fact, he loses about a penny a gallon, which most dealers are doing. He loses a penny a gallon. What is happening is that when individuals walk into the store to purchase, for full-service purchase, he has food and other items in there. If he doesn't have liquor, they won't come back, or he doesn't, since it operates as a liquor store for almost five, six years, he doesn't have that continuity. He doesn't expect to make that back right away. His position is that it will be a long haul and tough haul for the next three to four months, even if you grant it those customers. He's lost that customer base already. So once he starts back, he's hoping to gain it back slowly and keep servicing the loans and get his taxes caught up. So that's the direct connection between the liquor he had has had these other problems. Basically, he's taken everything now because of this lost revenue from the inventory that is just sitting stored in his storage house, and so he doesn't have any of that income that he's been able to sell. So it's directly tied to the liquor store, and he believes his income should go up about $8,000 to $10,000, that's what he's estimating, if he can get the liquor license, and he's already qualified for it, as you can see from the bond exhibit that I put into the letter.
A month, $8,000 to $10,000 a month?
Well, that's what he's thinking, but it won't happen right away.
At this one store?
At this one store. He thinks that it's going to take him four to five months to be able to make that difference. It's a fairly busy street, as you know. I drive by going to the county soccer fields over there with my kids, but it's a fairly busy street, as we all know about, East 14th Street.
Are these all residents of the 4th Ward buying the?
I'll take the fifth on that, or I don't know whether I should respond to that. Yeah. I won't respond.
As a follow-up and with a related question, counsel, given, and to make this sound as least heartless as I possibly can.
Sure.
Given that it's going to be a long haul to make back this revenue and eventually this hopefully profit, and given that the moratorium only lasts for another 35 days, I mean, is this really an unnecessary hardship that's going to break the business if the council waits the 35 days and we see where the zoning regulation turns out?
Right. Obviously, he'll have to go back and look at zoning, or zoning will have to look at him if this appeal is successful. It will be a hardship. One thing I wanted to say, and I put in my notes right away, we appreciate the prompt attention that Council, Mayor, and Legal has given this because he's basically in dire straits and is on the brink of perhaps having to file some type of relief if he doesn't get it, and he's, his family's putting everything into keeping this thing going right now. 35 days would make a huge difference to him. Obviously, if he doesn't get it, he has to look at alternatives, but the 35 days just to sell his inventory that he has in stock and he's been carrying would make a big difference to him.
Now, the bank letter that you submitted as part of the materials references that the property taxes are currently delinquent.
Correct.
However, in prior years, in 2011 and 2010, I couldn't help but notice that the bank said that they were delinquent in those years, and that was presumably when your client was licensed with the liquor license.
It was licensed, it was leased out at that point to AB, and right now, he would be taking control again and be a direct item that he will try to liquidate. If you look at his other businesses, he's always paid them and tried to stay current, but those were times when he was having some lease problems with some of the people who he leased the property to.
In both 2010 and 2011?
Correct, correct. There was AB, I believe, in 2010, and then Mr. Sahi breached his agreement with them. It was AB Food Mart before that, and then he had it three years before that when there were no issues.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, on the new facility there in Hubble, could you tell us who paid for the renovation of that building? Did he pay for that?
Let me ask, of course, I know I addressed that at planning and zoning. I don't have my notes with me, and I apologize for that when I presented planning and zoning. Could you tell us, Mr. Dassin?
Yes. I borrowed money, I think, from private lender, and if you look at the, on the site, I mean, there's a lien on the property. He put it like to, for, when I borrowed the money. There's an extra lien on the property for, like, I borrowed the money to do the improvements. I mean, like, I'm sure that it's, might be on the record that I borrowed $100,000 on a private lender because the bank won't lend me the money, looking at the finances, I mean, the cash flow. So I end up borrowing money, I mean, like, I'm sure that it's on the...
Is that, is that a first or second mortgage lien, do you know?
It's a second mortgage.
Second mortgage.
First was a Taco John, like, I borrowed, it's a contract property. And when I was doing the improvements, I'm like, my store got burned down, and then I was really hard, and then I borrowed the money, I think. It might be on the, you can look at on the record that there's a lien, second lien on the property, which was money borrowed from a private lender, because the bank was not giving me the money.
Did I misunderstand you? I thought originally you said you were leasing it, now you, didn't you just say just a contract purchase?
Yes.
No, he's leased it out, but it was a contract purchase from Taco John, and I think when we came before planning and zoning, to have it open, that's what we, that's the way we presented it to them, Councilman.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Brian, why don't we go back to your, your motion?
The motion will be 52B to grant the relief.
The relief has not been granted from the moratorium, as I understand it, and so it'll be, I assume, since the moratorium runs out in about 35 days, we... it'll be, I assume, since the moratorium runs out in about thirty-five days, we, I would presume you'll probably be back to try to figure out what the alternatives are at that point.
We're welcome.
With the, with the other piece, hey, you wanna wait a second?
Mrs. Bethel.
Let's, so the, there was a failure of, of B, and I'm assuming with advice from counsel here that we need to turn around and try to have a motion that will pass, so if somebody would wanna try A.
I'll move item fifty-two A.
All right, item fifty-two A has been moved. All right, so that, that does pass, and so it has been moved to, to deny, and city attorney, I think, has pretty well outlined where we go from here.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifty-three, on the conveyance of an overhead electric transmission line easement to Mid-American Energy Company on city-owned property east of southwest Fifty-Ninth Street between North Valley Drive and Winona Avenue for the WRA Southwest Area Diversion Facility, Phase Twenty-two, Segment Five Pump Station Project, one dollar. Is anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move fifty-three.
Fifty-four, on the conveyance of multiple easements to the Blague Park Zoo to Mid-American Energy Company, again, for another dollar.
Can we start asking for two dollars on these?
I think we should.
I'll move-
At least a silver dollar.
I'll move fifty-four.
All right, item's been moved. Is there anybody here to speak to it? Seeing none?
Seven yes.
Item fifty-five, on the vacation conveyance of a portion at Fifteen Street and of a subsurface easement along Walnut Street adjoining fourteen forty Walnut Street for the Crane Building Redevelopment Project, twelve thousand six hundred dollars, and to continue to June eleventh, two thousand twelve, at five P.M.
I'll move fifty-five.
It's been moved, and the motion really here is to continue. Anybody here to speak to it? Seeing none? Item fifty-six, on the vacation conveyance of subservice easement for fat oil and grease discharge F O G interceptor adjoining one oh one East Locust Street, Embassy Suites, to Atrium Finance Three L.P. for twenty-seven hundred dollars. Counsel Communication Number Twelve dash two fifty, A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Again, Embassy Suites.
I'll move fifty-six A and B.
Seeing none, motion? Item fifty-seven, on a request from Jose Zembrano and Jose Gonzalez to rezone property at two thousand and one and two thousand and nine Clark Street and fifteen ten M.L. King Parkway, Junior Parkway from Limited C one Neighborhood Retail Commercial to C two, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow the reuse of the premises for a general motor vehicle repair shop. Plan and zoning commission recommends denial. A roll call contains an alternate motions. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I will move to uphold the denial on item fifty-seven.
Okay. Item fifty-eight, on items regarding property at twelve twenty-eight Second Avenue, Julie Bassman and Jerome Bassman, A is to amend the one twenty-twenty community character land use plan, future land use designation from general industrial and low-density residential commercial, pedestrian-oriented commercial corridor, and B, a hearing on the rezoning of the property from M-one light industrial to R-one sixty, one-family low-density residential, to N.P.C. neighborhood pedestrian commercial to allow the redevelopment of a retail commercial center, subject to conditions. C is the first consideration to the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration, the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant, and again, it requires six votes, in this property at twelve twenty-eight Second Avenue. Anyone here to speak to this? All right, looks like we have a couple of speakers. Can you give us your name and address?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name's Julie Bassman. I'm here to request rezoning at twelve twenty-eight Second Avenue, so that we can tear down the existing building and put up a new retail center, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Yes, Mr. Moore?
Did you meet with the Riverbend Neighborhood Association?
Yes, we had a letter of recommendation that I faxed to Eric this morning, this afternoon. I've got a copy if anyone would like to see it.
Yeah, you've got a letter supporting you from the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah.
Why don't you submit it?
Move to receive and file.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions? Anybody has either one of our speakers?
Unless staff had any comments on this one, and with the letter of support from the neighborhood, I haven't seen the letter, is that-
There you go.
Is it in fact in support of, of this? All right, the, the letter is in support, and I would go ahead and move item fifty-eight, A through D.
All right.
Seven yes.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Item fifty-nine, on the conveyance of twelve oh two, twelve oh four, and thirteen hundred Scott Avenue, the Lomar Building, to Midwest Automatic Sprinkler, Fire Sprinkler Company, six hundred and five thousand, and to continue this item to June eleventh, two thousand twelve, at five P.M. Counsel Communication Number Twelve dash two forty-four. Anybody here to speak to this? The item actually is to continue to June eleventh.
Move.
All right, item sixty, on Columbus Park, Henry Park Water Features, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designate the lowest responsible bidder as the Hanson Company, Inc., Greg Faber, President, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Counsel Communication Number Twelve dash two forty, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this? Again, these are park improvements and water features, those parks.
Move sixty and sixty-eight.
And we had a meeting up at Highland Park on this master plan for McHenry, and it's very, very good plan, and everybody's looking forward to it.
All right, Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes.
Item sixty-one, on the Woodland Cemetery Entrance Arch, a resolution proving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designate the lowest responsible bidder as Jensen Construction Company. Kurt E. Rasmussen is the owner, eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Counsel Communication Number Twelve dash two fifty-two, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anyone here to speak to the Woodland Cemetery Entrance Arch? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move sixty-one.
Mayor, I'd like to point out on this, I met with Jerry LeBlanc probably five years ago about this, and there, there was an issue with a tree that's near it, and I asked him if he was sure this was gonna take place, and he said, "I'll guarantee you, we're gonna have an arch." And as you read this, here is a person that's actually put his money where his mouth is, and I think it's very interesting that he's willing to donate sixty-five thousand dollars towards this to get it put in.
Seven yes.
All right, that completes the hearings at, looks like, five forty-one, and it moves us back to item forty-four, which is a ordinance's second consideration on a request from Arnold DeWitt to rezone property at twelve forty-one East Thirty-Eighth Street from R-one sixty, one-family low-density residential to Limited C two, general retail and highway-oriented This is the second consideration. Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none?
Seeing none. I've talked with Mr. DeWitt, and he has some reasons that he needs to not have the final approval tonight, so I'll move forty-four for the second approval.
Okay. Item forty-five, amending chapter seventy-four of the municipal code regarding park facility hours and overnight use of parks by special permit, A is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Any questions on that ordinance amendment? From the audience, seeing none, counsel, any comments?
I, I just got one. We had an issue a few years ago up at McHenry Park, and a gentleman across the street was complaining that people were in the park after sundown, and the police were saying they weren't there after sundown, and I, I really think we need to come up with a definition in here that says what time sundown is, just to, it's the only time I know of that ever happening, but I, I could see the potential with us doing this. It, it's gonna come up in the future, and I think that we need to have a definition that says this is when sundown is, that this is what we're gonna go by.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we'd be happy to look at that, Mr. Moore. Perhaps if, if you do approve this tonight, we'd be happy to look at that, work with city attorney and Parks Department, and we'll get back to you with a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would, I'm, I'm supportive of the ordinance. I've, I had some questions, which the staff has provided some information for us on, for me on. I would just like to ask that we include in the motion, when it's made, that there be some mechanism to report back to us as counsel, because many times when we have new ordinances of this magnitude, there may be something that happens that we really hadn't thought through, and the unintended consequences, so I'd just like to have a report back, maybe the first of November, after we've gone six months or so.
Yep, we'd be happy to do it.
All right, any other comments? Motion?
Move.
It's been moved.
With the report back in six months?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
Sorry, I thought I hit it.
Seven yes.
All right, forty-six, amending chapter one oh two of the municipal code regarding sidewalk maintenance compliance and sidewalk construction. Counsel Communication Number Twelve dash two forty-one is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the community development director and the city engineer, and requires six votes. B is an amendment to the schedule of fees. Anybody in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, motion to amend chapter one oh two? Anyone? Item forty-seven, from Councilmember Brian Meyer, to discuss administrative hearing officer appeals. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that we've talked about on several occasions. I think the last time we talked about it, it may have been before Skip and Hallie were on the council, it was part of the overall discussion on how do we streamline city government, and one of the things I've noticed that takes up a lot of staff time and a lot of time here at the council is some of these appeals, and if you read my letter, I worked with staff on coming up with some of the appeals that come either from staff or from the administrative law judge here at the city to, and those, to the council for final disposition by us before they can go to district court. My contention on these are, quite frankly, we're a terrible jury, and we're, we're really bad at, at judging facts, because we are, as a council, we always want to help, and sometimes it's not in the best interest of what we're trying to do, and sometimes it, it, it just doesn't work, and it puts us in a tough spot to have to put a dog down, and sometimes we act in emotional terms instead of looking at the facts of any given case. And so what I've proposed here is, is that, similar to what state law is, that in a, in a state law case, with these administrative appeals, you would go, and I did very many of them when I was at the Attorney General's office, you would go have the, somebody would be cited by DHS, or, or something would happen, their appeal process is, then they would go to administrative law judge, very similar to what happens here. In addition, after the administrative law judge would rule, it would go to the director of that agency, who would have final approval, but then it would go to district court, and at district court, through chapter seventeen A, district court would be the next level of appeal, and after that, to the, or to the Iowa Supreme Court. And so, the reason for doing that is it just, there's no board or anything like that that would review, it just goes directly to district court. I think that has benefits to the people that have appeals before us. We sometimes are pretty hodgepodge in the way we administer justice, especially on the dogs, and I think this is a much more fair way of doing this, and as a benefit, I think it would save staff and council time if people were to go directly to, to district court based on the staff ruling or the administrative law judge's ruling, so. That's what this is, it's a, it's an attempt to streamline and to take us out of the process. And you can see the list, vicious dogs, disposition, seizure, seizure of impalement or disposition of illegal animals, determination of a dangerous animal, impalement of vehicles, denial of limousine license, denial of tap, taxi cab licenses, and, can I add classy liquor licenses? No?
I was gonna say all alcohol-related items.
Moratorium relief? If you made the motion, would it be to refer it for legal writing? How, what would your action and idea?
This would be, this would be the initial step of referring it to the city attorneys in the city manager's office, to come up with the legal wording of it.
I'm, I'm supportive of it, and I, I think there is a good reason to do it. Most of them, you listed either in your letter or, or tonight. I, I also think with the administrative hearing officer being seen by so many citizens as a arm of the city, it gives some independence to the decision-making and appeal process that, you know, I think citizens can embrace.
Having said that, Jeff, did I get it right? I mean, am I missing something?
Sure.
In my statements, did I get it correct as to what we're doing here?
I believe you did, yes, sir.
I would just add that, and I'm supportive of this, I agree completely, but if there's anything else that would fit, that we should add, that I would include it, I guess, I'm just thinking of the field process.
Shoveling snow off a walk?
Pardon?
Shoveling snow off a walk?
No, and then the other issue we had with the- No, and then the other issue we had with the bagging of the meters and impounding...
I think that's...
I guess that's under impounding, but if there's anything else in here that we've... That Brian has overlooked, feel free to add it.
I don't ever...
I can't imagine you can...
Roger Brown, in my office a couple of years ago, put together a memo, and unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me, but there are twenty-some items that actually could go to council for appeal, although a number of those, in my staff's collective memory and recollection, have never been before council on appeal, at least not in their tenure. So, I mean, those are things that we could certainly add if that's council's direction, and then if some of those, for whatever reason, are later determined by council not to be appropriate to be included in this process, you could certainly remove those from the ordinance.
I'd like to make one statement, Brian, in regard. I don't completely agree with that position. I think that I've sat in on probably thirty dog hearings, and where we were asked to redress the decision of the administrator in that hearing process, and I think that probably we have listened, and I think it's citizens asking citizens, those that they elected, to redress their concerns about a certain outcome. As we listen to the evidence, I think that I don't agree it's been exactly a hodgepodge. It hasn't been a pretty process, I will tell you that, from time to time, but I think that it's only in a couple of occasions with all those that, maybe three, that we've actually reversed it, and I think that we ruled in the right decision, not only for the dog, but hopefully for the citizenry. But certainly, I think, as was pointed out the other night by Mr. Grease, there are concerns that maybe we would like to have moved to another level of dangerous or viciousness of dogs that we weren't being asked to consider at that particular time. But I just... I think that as we refer this to the manager and the legal, I think we do owe it to ourselves to think about, you know, citizens having a place where they can come and discuss their concerns about rulings that may have happened. Sometimes it's about a car. Been a couple of those that we've reversed as well, but I think that we are citizens, we have the opportunity to have talked to these people on a day-to-day basis and experienced some of the pain through the years that, in some cases, they have, like an impounded vehicle. I know that there are situations that we have seen in our lifetimes, and we know how sometimes it gets to a point where it's not reasonable, although by the letter of the law, it's the outcome that's demanded by the administrative officers. So I just think that we ought to look at it and decide whether or not those are things that we ought to consider as we pass off yet more responsibility to somebody else.
I will move forty-seven with Christine's amendment to look at others.
Seven, yes.
All right, that moves on to item forty-eight, which is the first of the communications reports, first from Steve Jacobs of Business Capital Corporation of Seventeen Oh Seven High Street to speak regarding a stop sign issue at Seventeenth and High Street. Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Mayor, council, council staff, thank you very much. Steve Jacobs, VCC advisor, Seventeen Oh Seven High Street. I'm going to let some pictures do some of my speaking for me. We occupied the building at Seventeen Oh Seven High Street approximately four years ago, and at that time, the street was not very active. There wasn't an awful lot going on. We had city staff do some analysis some time ago, I think they may have done something in early twenty-eleven. Since that time, with Wellmark coming online, with the new apartment building down the street, a block or so, the new apartment complex being built right on the corner of Seventeenth and High on the south side, the anticipation of something happening sometime in the near future in the old Crescent Chevrolet building, there's an awful lot of traffic on High Street, and it runs pretty fast, east and west, because there are no stop signs from Fifteenth all the way to ML King. And we have visualized several accidents from our office. You can see here from these pictures that when you're coming, going south on Seventeenth Street, the first picture is the stop sign you see when you come to a stop at Seventeenth and High going south, and if you turn to page two and three, you can see on page three how far into the intersection that car has to go to be able to see whether or not there is a vehicle coming from the west to the east. And then, of course, on the last page, you'll see one of the more recent accidents that's occurred in the last year. I've talked to the neighbors, I've got some emails. Unfortunately, they couldn't come tonight, but Mike Simonson from Simonson Architectural is supportive of a four-way stop. Joe Willis from Willis and Moore is supportive of a four-way stop. All of us at VCC advisors are supportive of a four-way stop, as is Mr. Garrettson, who has the barbecue place. I wasn't able to get ahold of the owner proprietor of the Well Read Bookstore, he was up at Ames teaching a class. So we would ask that you reconsider putting a four-way stop at Seventeenth and High Street to slow the traffic down, and I have to share with the group emails from the various parties that I spoke with. I only have one copy of the one from Randy Manier, managing member that owns the Crescent Chevrolet property, but he says, "I support the creation of a four-way stop at Seventeenth and High Street." So we've tried to do our homework in talking to the neighbors. As you'll recall, these apartment buildings that are being built on High Street are right on the street, and if you'll drive by there at night, you'll see down at the other place that's very close, just at Eighteenth and High, a lot of people park right on the street because they can hop out of their car and go right in the front door, and many places in the back and on the upper level, they don't park, and I think we're going to find the same kind of issue with the new apartment building, because it's more convenient to park on the street and just run right into your apartment. And what we're trying to do is protect the citizens and protect traffic and property from having problems in the future. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just thank you for coming down, Stephen. I know this has been an issue that we've been working on, and it's been before this council a number of times. It was part of the discussion at PMC when they went before for the apartment project, and I'm going to make a motion that we work with traffic and transportation and just get it done, because it's been before so many times. I think the property, the density down there, the Wellmark, as you stated, we've got support of really all of the property owners down there, and to be perfectly honest, I think the traffic flow has changed so much in the last couple of years. I remember when councilmember Kiernan was on the council, trying to get this done, so I just think that the development has increased dramatically, and we need to get it done. So my motion will be to move forward with this. It'll have to go through traffic and transportation and come back as an ordinance, but...
Mr. Jacobs, do you own a UConn?
No, sir.
You thought it was a plant, didn't you?
We wouldn't do that. But we are going to finish out the rest of the building, and we're going to have eighteen or nineteen people in the building, so...
We'd like that, that's great.
Iowa appraisal research will move into the unoccupied space, so we're doing our best to increase activity on the street as well.
Congratulations on that, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, item forty-nine, a receipt of the Ingersoll and Grand Avenue revitalization strategy as presented by the Ingersoll and Grand Avenue Planning Committee.
Who would have guessed you would have been the last item on the agenda? That's a hint, Ted.
It's been pretty standard, I think, when I've been here, I've been pretty close to last.
Dedication.
Yes.
You can always stay for Board of Health.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ted Irvine. I'm at Twenty-eight Oh One Ingersoll with my business, The Mansion, and a lifetime Des Moines resident. Five minutes for this presentation. I'll have to read fast, it's thirty-one pages at twelve point four. I'm just going to highlight a few pages in the plan, I thought this would be the easiest, but this project came together at the direction of council and the manager to go back and develop a process to create a master plan from the perspective of the neighborhoods and the business associations and the commercial folks in the area, and we've gone back and done that in the last year. And we've had ten neighborhood associations associated with this, along with the Westside Chamber, the Restoration Ingersoll Group, the Ingersoll Business Committee, and then we've had a very strong assist from Glenn Lyons, from the Downtown Community Alliance has been a huge help to this, and then, of course, Susie McBroom is omnipresent and with us all the time, working on everything related to Ingersoll. So the process included six planning teams, made up of folks that came out of all those groups, as well as just some concerned citizens that showed up at our focus group meetings. We held three public meetings in conjunction with staff, and we made teams that worked on marketing and communications, finance and economic development, land use and sustainability, public art, transportation, the Grand Avenue streetscape and the Grand Avenue Plan in general. And then, of course, we had those great sponsors. Just going to skip to... There are two pages of recommendations. I wanted to highlight just a couple of them, I'm not going to go through them, there's nineteen total recommendations. Sorry, I did make some notes which ones I absolutely wanted to do. The... Very much what we found, and I'll show you a little bit of the focus group here in a minute, but very much what we found was just that the folks that were involved in putting this plan together, and from the neighborhoods and from the business community, everybody wanted to sustain the things that they liked about Ingersoll and get rid of the things that they don't, and that probably wasn't very hard to predict as an outcome of a plan like this, but we've really decided, for instance, in number three of our recommendations, that we want to employ higher standards of energy efficiency and sustainable development principles throughout what we do, whether we're redeveloping something or we're going to preserve some sort of property along the street, we'd like to make sure we're doing that. The... We want to reuse structures to the extent that we can, to the extent that it supports the high density that we're recommending in the area, the higher density, I shouldn't say high density, of the area, and where it supports the architectural standards of the street that we're going to be coming up with as well, and NPC zoning. We are in support absolutely of the Bus Rapid Transit thing that DART's been working on, as well as the sewer enhancement project that's been going on for a long time and will continue. We believe that those three things, the streetscape project that we're recommending, the Bus Rapid Transit, and the sewer project, those, all three, including construction elements, should all happen at the same time, so that's one of our recommendations. The sewer work, the DART project, and the streetscape really happening together kind of puts us on a similar time track, and so whoever's going to be done, whoever's going to be ready to go the fastest, the rest of us kind of have to get on board with it. The... Obviously, we're recommending a completion of the streetscape work. We did a pilot project three years ago, four years ago, the calendar turned over, I guess. In two thousand eight, we completed the pilot project between Twenty-eighth and Thirty-First Street. It was a fairly contemporary urban design streetscape. It's been very well received by the community, very... It's very pretty now, everything's starting to bloom. Our under-and-over story trees are growing nicely, and it's just been a real enhancement to Ingersoll. The question you get all the time, when you own a business on the street, or when you're out talking about this constantly, like I am, is, "When's it coming to my part of Ingersoll, and when do we expand it?" And that's what we're here to do, is to try to get that expanded along the breadth the whole time. Is that five minutes? Who's got that bell? All right, I'll skip some of those. One of the things in my background that we've always... I've always sought to do is never recommend something without giving some answers as to how it might happen. We are recommending a TIF district be developed for... To support this project and in this district, and in order to get some increment, we realized there's going to have to be development, redevelopment happening, and so our land use and sustainability team, along with lots and lots of good advice from folks in the city that have worked on projects like the Western Gateway and the East Village and everything else, advised us on how to do that kind of thing, and we've come up with some sites that we're recommending that we think will be very good candidates to develop increment and develop more of the kinds of properties we'd like to see in the district, and those would both be on Grand and Ingersoll Avenue. The public process, as I said, involves the Westside Chamber, the Business Committee, the neighborhood associations, ten of which, Osperio won't read them all, the Downtown Community Alliance. One of the things that was very interesting that happened when we just started this process is DCA was working on their downtown economic development plan, and they identified Ingersoll as really within that sphere of economic development for downtown, so that sort of gave us the acknowledgement to that natural connection that we do have to downtown, and Glenn Lyons has been particularly helpful in advising us. He's done this kind of thing elsewhere in the country and outside the country, and knows quite a bit about what we're trying to accomplish here. We work very closely with DART and with the sewer folks as well. The focus group was very simple, and I think it worked really well. We had fifty or sixty people come, and Glenn conducted that with us, and what we asked basically is, "What do you like about Ingersoll? What don't you like, and what do you want to see changed?" And we did the same thing, asked the same three questions for Grand, and we came up with, you know, what I say is, "We want more of what we like, and we want to get rid of what we don't like." But we also figured out that although Grand and Ingersoll are tied together, they're very different areas. Ingersoll is a commercial district, Grand is more residential, but there are commercial opportunities, and there are commercial enterprises there, but they look different. The big setbacks on Grand, we recommend preserving, and that's what came out of our focus groups. We want to figure out how to get more trees and maybe do a streetscape project there that takes into account those Grand lawns and the big trees, and how to get more of that kind of thing, obviously preserving our historic structures on Grand and Ingersoll. We want to bury utilities where we can, and really look at some code enforcement kind of things, to be able to put some teeth into the things that we don't think get addressed quickly enough with some of the bad actors in the district. So we're here today, and that's the extent of what I'm going to present from the plan, but we're here today to ask the council to receive and file this plan and send it along to staff. We're prepared with our volunteers and otherwise to work very closely with staff over the next thirty days, hopefully, to work out some of the kinks in this plan that we've come up with, make it work well with how the city would implement it, and we're here to represent our groups of folks, and then a lot of what we did was planning to plan, so there are certainly things in here that are going to need twelve or eighteen months to figure out how we're going to address Grand Avenue, for instance, and we're prepared to put those groups together and continue and come up with those plans as we go. So one of the things that I would really like to see in your motion is that... So, one of the things that I would really like to see in your motion is that when staff takes this on, that staff take advantage of all the volunteers and non-volunteers that are available to help to iron these things out, and we're at your beck and call for the next thirty days while staff is gonna be looking at that, hopefully. So, thank you very much. Any questions? Glenn or I would be happy to answer.
Mrs. Hensley, and you know what? Ten minutes, right on a nose.
All right.
You're lucky. I, you know, I just am wanting to thank and acknowledge all of the work and effort that's gone into this plan. We gave them direction and asked them to go out and do it, and I think it really sets, develops a template for how we can do this in other parts of the city. They spent a great deal of time and effort with the public input meetings, it's a grassroots plan, and there are some items in there that I think are a little bit progressive, but that's good, and I know that we'll have to work on some items that maybe even if there's acceptance of those in the final plan that comes out, that we would need to work with the legislature. I think that's good as well, but it really gives us a wealth of information, a lot of different opportunities for us to look at, and I might just add, on the Ingersoll restoration, there's quite a bit of activity that's gone on in Ingersoll, and as a result of Ingersoll restoration, you've got the Dolls Project that actually incorporated the landscape, you've got Jake Christensen's project down just west of MLK that has actually incorporated all of the landscape, so, you know, we're seeing movement here, and it is because of everybody working together to make sure that we've got it. So, this is a logical next step. I'll make the motion to receive and file, refer it to the city manager's office and all the appropriate departments, knowing that we've already had some preliminary information there, and ask that we work on it and bring it back. I'm hoping thirty days, I'd like to put a thirty-day timeline on it, just because I know that they've had the information for a while, and to keep this going, because it's an aggressive plan, and they wanna keep moving on this through the summer months. And I'd just like to acknowledge both Susie and Glenn for being here. Susie's our Ingersoll cheerleader, and Glenn, I know, has spent a great deal of time working side-by-side with Ted on this, and appreciate that very much, because it is a natural extension of downtown, it just seems like it's such a natural extension, and we need to figure out how to maximize and leverage that. So, thank you all. My motion is.
We got it.
You got it, okay.
Three, save, file, and give it to the appropriate departments and the manager.
And thank you for waiting.
Thanks.
We'll wait till I see what happens here.
It gets exciting, I'm telling you. All right, could we have a motion to adjourn as city council and come back as Board of Health? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, we now sit as Board of Health. The item one is the legal department to proceed with court actions seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at thirteen thirty-four East Thirteenth Street, it's a main structure and a garage structure. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the legal department to proceed at thirteen thirty-four East Thirteenth Street?
So moved.
Been moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, item passes, could we have a motion to adjourn? On favor?
Aye.
Foes, we sit adjourned, thank you all for attending.